Good evening. Thank you. This is a public hearing, TAPR, of the Board of Trustees of United ISD. Today is Wednesday, 25th day of January 2023, and I am calling this public hearing of the Board of Trustees to order. If I can have the board members that are present, please recite their full name for the record.
Ricardo Rico, he is present.
Elisa Flores Olivero is present.
Frank Castillo, present.
And myself, Ramiro Valdez, the third, present. That the record show the meeting, this meeting has been duly called, and the notice that this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Music Act. Agenda item one is open, the public hearing. We have motion to open.
Summer.
Second.
Motion second, and discussion also referred to open.
Aye.
And really quickly, for the record, we do have a quorum present.
Okay.
Thank you, Steven.
Yes, sir.
All right, agenda item A1A is Texas Education Code, 39.306 and 39.362, presentation of United ISD's annual report, including TAPRs, which is Texas Academic Performance Report, and PIMS Financial Standard Report describing the district's educational and financial performance.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Gonzalez and members of the audience. It is 5:17. My name is Angelica Sanchez, and I am the DEIC chair. At this time, like as mentioned, I would like to open up the DEIC meeting for the month of January. Our agenda item, as mentioned, is the open public hearing for the presentation of United ISD's annual report, including the Texas Academic Performance Report and the PIMS Financial Standard Report describing the district's educational and financial performance. At this time, it's Cristina Cabeo, Executive Director of Instructional Accountability, will begin the presentation.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Mr. Gonzalez, and members of the audience. My name is Cristina Cabeo, and I'm here to present a portion of our TAPR report. We have seven sections to the annual report, and we will be discussing each one. I want you to know that TAPR was just released in December, and it is released in two different formats, one being an online format and the other is a PDF version. We're really excited about 2022. Our district, United ISD, was earned an A rating for the third time, so we're really excited about that. We also earned our post-secondary distinction, and we also meet the requirement for our special education determination status. So we're really excited. United ISD is doing extremely well. This is our demographic information. If you notice here, United ISD is at a 98.9 for Hispanic, and the state is at a 52.7. We have a very large population of Hispanic students. Our economically disadvantaged is higher than the state. Our emergent bilingual, again, higher than the state, and our at-risk population is also higher than our state. This is our STAR performance, all grades, all subjects, and this is by our performance level. And if you notice, United ISD outperformed the state in all levels.
I think that deserves an applause.
Yes.
Thank you.
Here, we have it broken down by subject. United ISD, if you notice, surpasses the state. The only area, we still surpass the state in approaches and social studies, but at the meets and master's performance levels, we are working on that. We are close to reaching our goal. So we are changing our curriculum, our scope and sequence, to focus on this area. We, in regards to the bilingual education, our English as a second language, we have three different programs, the early exit program, our dual-language program, and our ESL pullout program. So under our early exit, we want to exit our students starting as early as first grade. United ISD surpasses, and the performance level surpasses, the state. In our dual-language, we also surpassed the state. And then our English as a second language pullout program, which are secondary students, middle and high schools, we surpassed its approaches, and we are working very close to the state at a 24%, and they're at a 25%, and we are at a 7%, and they are at a 9%. So we are slowly moving there. Participation rates, if you notice, last year, how many students participated in STAR? 99% of all eligible students participated taking the STAR exam. Our attendance and dropouts, if you notice, district compared to the state, in attendance, and our dropout rate, grade 7 through 8, and our dropout rate, 9 through 12. I do want to focus on our dropout rate. It looks like, you know, UISD is at a 1.2, and the state is at a 2.4. Here, the lower the percent, the better. So United ISD is doing extremely well in keeping our students in school, focusing on graduation. Talking about graduation, class of 2021, we completely surpassed the state in the region at a 97.2. And if you notice there at the bottom, our students graduating with the foundation high school program with a distinguished level of achievement, we completely outscored the state at a 91.5. So we are doing extremely well with our graduation rates. These are the indicators for post-secondary readiness, and we have five indicators. And if you notice there, we completely surpassed the state in all indicators. We're doing extremely well. We are going to continue speaking about student information, our program information, and staff here with United ISD. So this is our student information by grade level. It starts as early as early childhood all the way to grade 12, and we are pretty much where the state is. Some, we are a little bit higher, that we enroll more, but in some grade levels, we are a little bit under the state. But this is just our breakdown. Our ethnic distribution, and as I noted in another slide, Hispanic, we are at a 98.9 versus the state, the Hispanic population is at a 52.7. Here, on section one, our economically disadvantaged population, we are at a 75.4, the state is at a 60.4. Anything that is there that is highlighted in red, we surpassed the state, and this is our breakdown here with United ISD. So our section 504, we are at a 9.8, EB students 37.7, and our at-risk population is at a 64.4 versus the state, that they are at a 53.5. This is noteworthy, knowing that our enrollment, our bilingual are gifted and talented, and our special education population, we garnered an A as our rating, and our population is way above the state here. So we're doing, again, extremely well. These are our retention rates by grade. And if you notice, kindergarten through ninth grade, I think what is really noteworthy is grade 9, which is the largest percent at the state level, that they are being retained as freshmen at a 14.1 versus at special ed, and we are retaining 5.5. So we are well below the state when it comes to retaining, especially in ninth grade. And I do attribute that to our ninth-grade high school campuses, that they are a standalone campus. They're focusing on the students that enter high school right before they enter the big main campus, being 10th, 11th, and 12th. These are the class size averages, district to state. And if you notice, United ISD, we are a little below, which is good. Our class size averages are small compared to the state. And now we will have Mr. David Canales present our staffing information.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good afternoon. Behind these great scores and what we've seen before is, of course, our staff. I want to share with you that our scores is not by coincidence. What I want to show with you is, of course, we have full staff. I want to let you know, this is just full staff only, not part-time staff. We have about 6,200 staff members that are with us. You'll see that our professional staff is about 3,000 plus. Our teacher staff is about 2,500, and then we have all the support staff that helps our teachers. And of course, you'll see the rest, compared to the state and to us, we've been doing pretty well. Next slide, and I'll move on. So we have a breakdown, and you'll see, again, you know, we had a high number of Hispanic students. Well, again, we have a high number of Hispanic teachers, and we have a breakdown there. We have, of course, a breakdown with males to females, almost three to one, females to males. And then, of course, you'll see our degrees, the bachelor's degrees, master's degrees, and doctor's degrees, and you see that comparison. So we're pretty much aligned with our bachelors and masters, what the state usually mirrors. Then you look at our teaching. Now, this is where I think it matters the most. We keep our teachers. Teachers don't leave UISD. And we're a very seasoned group, and I think because we're a seasoned group, you find that our students do better because we have that experience in our pocket. So I wanted to share with you. So beginning teachers, you know, we had 2.1%, the state had 7.9%, 1 to 5, 17.3, state had 26%. If you look at 6 to 10, 15.7, it's 20.6. You see them a little higher. But notice, from that point on, is where we really gain our strengths. So from 11 to 20 years' experience, we're at 41.6%, and they're at 28%. And then 21 to 30, 19% to 13%. This is what I mean, that that experience, you can't take that away. This is where I believe that our scope and sequence, our experience with our teachers, are really giving us a big bang for our buck when we deal with our kids. So then, you look at the average, average years. Average years of principals, 8.8 compared to 6.3. Average years of principals within the district, 8.8 again, compared to 5.4. Average years of experience with assistant principals, 9.1 to 5.5. And of course, assistant principals, 9.0 to 4.8. Again, years of experience, people are not leaving. It's the consistency of us with the philosophy and the ideas that our district has, and it's having an impact with our students. And of course, average years of experience with teachers, 14.4 compared to the state, 11.1. Average years of experience with teachers in the district, 12.7 to 7.2. So you'll see in every category, our district is stronger because people are staying with us. Our salaries are competitive. You compare it to statewide, you know, we have beginning teachers, 50,000 plus versus 51. And if you go down the line, what you're with us for, we're 30 years, is when we end up having more than what the 72,000 versus 71,000 by the state. Teachers, 58, we mirror 58. Support staff, 70 to 69. Campus administration, 83 to 84. Central office is 96 compared to 112 by the state. So for the most part, we're very competitive. We're aligned with the state has. Let me move on to the next slide. So this is a breakdown where we find our staff. So 139 of our teachers, which is 5.5% is bilingual. Career technology is 7.4 compared to a 5.2. Our career technology program is very strong at UISD, as you know. That's how PCMR has done very well because of the sequencing. And of course, compensatory education, that's like your speech therapist, occupational therapist. You know, we're at 1.2 compared to 3.0 from the state. Hidden talent at 8.2 to 1.7, there we are above. And that might be because of our dual credit, co-forces, and our AP instructor. And of course, you have regular education, 67 to 70. Special education, 10 to 9. And then other, of course, we don't have others, so that's 3.5.
What would other be? Oh, sorry.
I don't know. We don't have others.
Sorry.
I'll ask my colleague. No?
Maybe like...
Maybe driver's education and teacher, maybe, maybe.
Yeah, right, okay.
Maybe. But for the most part, we're very much aligned with what the state has. We are above in some areas, in most areas, to be honest with you. But our seasoned staff, I think, is the trigger why we are successful at this district. So we want to thank the board for supporting our staff.
Well, I think the thank you is not for us. I think the thank you is for everyone here, yourself included, if I may.
Right.
Yeah. I don't know who we have in the audience. I imagine it's our staff, it's our educators.
We have our principals here, and our coordinators, and several folks that help us get this A. So that's who we have here. And of course, we have other folks that are here, our parents and some students that are present.
If I may, we also have some DEIC members with some teachers that are here present as well.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, definitely, teachers are in the forefront of this battle to educate our students, but definitely the backbone is right here. We're, you know, this is Board Appreciation Month. And I was just speaking at United Middle School, and I was saying that, you know, for me, it's very awkward to have board appreciation because I am a public servant. I ran for this position not to serve myself, but to serve my community, and more importantly, to serve the staff, the students and the families that this district serves. So it's difficult for me to be appreciated for a job that I feel like, I know the appreciation goes from this way, that way, and this reflects that because, you know, you make us look good. And to me, it's, like I was telling at United Middle School, I said, I know your job isn't 7:30 to 4:30 or 8 to 5. I know it's not Monday to Friday. I know it's evenings, Monday to Friday. I know it's Saturdays, it's Sundays. I know teachers take homework, they do a lot of grading at work. I know that your home is also your office. And from me to you, I appreciate you, and thank you for making us look good.
Thank you.
Continuing with the presentation, section two discusses the district accreditation status. However, this year, the commissioner waived assigning accreditation status because of COVID. Campus performance objectives know that each campus in our district is required to have a campus improvement plan. They are constantly looking at their TAPR report, and they are tweaking it and measuring their goals and working towards achieving their goals. And now we'll have Ms. Leyda Benavides present the financial portion.
Good afternoon, good evening. I'm just going to try to be real quick. You're going to get bombarded with a lot of numbers, but I'm going to try to bring it down to, let's see, I'm going to talk about revenues, expenditures, disbursements, tax rates, and fund balance. And this is data that's our 2020-21 school year. And remember, this was right in the middle of COVID, and so just to know, that was a very abnormal time. Just, you see how there's a lot of numbers, but I do want to direct you to revenues. Our state operating funds, we get $216 million from the state. It's about 55% of our general operation budget. And I think, and this is for students and staff that are here, I think that's why we stress attendance so much, because that's how we get funded by the state. This is all your hard work of posting attendance, this is where we see it. And so that really helps the budget. But you could see that it's 55% of our general operations. The bottom line there, I think I want to bring up, is that the very bottom line that says that per student for United ISD, we get about $14,500 in total of all our budgets. The state is $16,143. The state, per average, gets more, we get less. But I think we do miracles here with what we have. And I do also thank the board for supporting all the programs that we have because they're very effective. You saw the results from, and how we're spending this revenue. Expenditures, I know there's a lot of dollars there. I'll take you to the very bottom line, operating expenditures by function. Really, in total, per the district, we spend about $11,226 per student. That includes the debt that we borrowed to make all the beautiful buildings that our students attend. And we're on average, I would say, with the state. But our operating fund is a little less than $9,000 per student. The next slide also is a lot of numbers, and again, I'll take you to the bottom line there. They, this particular slide kind of even breaks it down by all our different programs. So if you ever have some time to read things, you can go to this slide, and there's a lot of numbers. But I think the bottom line also is that we do spend less per student than the state. If you see the very bottom line, it's $13,076 per student, again, including over $50 million of debt compared to $14,797 at the state. Again, I think United ISD is being efficient, using taxpayer dollar and state money, very effective with seeing the results of our student success. And then this slide, again, it's a different way of calling expenditures. These are disbursements. You'll see it's more or less the same type of numbers, that we spend $13,268 per student. And at the state level, they're spending $2,200 more per student. So again, I think we're being effective, efficient, and we're taking care of our revenue. Our total tax rate for last year was $1.19. The state average is $1.20. Again, showing our public that we only tax what we have to. And at this, you know, so at this time, we're about a penny below the state. And then our fund balance, this is kind of like our savings account. The very last item you can see there about our fund balance in general fund, it's about $91.7 million. About 89 million of that was unassigned, meaning that's our savings account to take care of anything that comes up that we didn't think about as we were doing our budget process. However, if you look at a district overall, we have about $4,000 per student in our savings account. And at the state level, I guess, on an average, some districts, I guess, I don't know what they're doing with their money or not doing with their money, but they have almost $9,000 per student. Does that mean we're doing something wrong here? I personally feel we're not overtaxing our taxpayers. We only tax what we need to pay our debt and to pay our operations. And then on the student side with the revenue, we're trying our very best to bring to, kind of, tell our students, hey, it's important not only to come for attendance, but it also helps us bring in money from the state to pay for teacher salaries and operations. And I believe that's my last one, yes. So thank you very much, and I do appreciate teachers. Thank you for all your hard work, and we do appreciate the board members for their full support on all our operations.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Gonzalez, members of the audience. My name is Rebecca Morales. I am the Assistant Superintendent for Administration and Policies. And I would like to talk to you about our safe, our strategies and activities to support safe and healthy students. That is one of the components of our Title IV grants. Not to say that all of these items that I'm presenting to you today are all funded with federal funds, however, these are some strategies that we have in place in the school district to support safe and healthy students across the district. So we do have a curriculum and instruction component. We have our staff development, and we do have our parental involvement, which I would really like to expand on, since, of course, curriculum and instruction, staff development, our teachers, a lot of them which are in the audience, they see this day in and day out, and they have access to this information. Now, as far as our parents are concerned, we really try to inform and engage our parents and provide the information, especially with trends that come along. So I'm going to give an example of the first bullet, like our parent summit. So what we try to do is we coordinate with our CNI staff, staff development, Ms. Taboada, our different departments, to provide different sessions to our parents, again, to support our safe and healthy student programs. So, for example, vaping, as you all know, because we've had these conversations, and our students are aware, our parents are aware, this is a problem. It's been a problem in our community. So we offer sessions like that to make our parents aware, look, this is a problem. This is what we're doing to battle it at our level, at the district level, and this is what you can do as a parent. Another example would be our fentanyl crisis that is nationwide right now. So we tend to target, obviously, supporting our curriculum and what we see in the district, but also trying to be proactive and talking about things that we're seeing in the community or that may be coming down to our level so that our parents are aware. There's a couple of other examples there. And of course, the newest addition to our school district, and again, thank you for your support on that, is our Family Matters Resource Center, where we have been providing a lot of opportunities for our parents to come and be more engaged with our district. And then I'd like to just share with you just the summary of findings from some of the programs that we do have in the school district. So for example, our ATOD survey, which is a survey for middle and high school students. We conducted this survey last year. We had 5,221 students that participated, and these were the results. So you can see the results from alcohol, electronic cigarettes, which is vaping, tobacco use, marijuana, they're all there, and the percentage of students that indicated from the students that completed the survey that they have actually used this in their lifetime. I can tell you, which is something that we're happy about, that in all cases, alcohol, marijuana, prescription drugs, all stayed the same or came down from last year, which is good. However, the one that did have a little increase is the use of the vaping, the electronic cigarette. We have a random drug testing program, which is run through our risk management department. It is 7 through 12 students that participate in extracurricular activities. We had 352 middle school students who were tested last year, resulted in nine positive tests, and 420 high school students, and resulted in 27 positive tests. We have our on-demand drug testing kits for parents that is run through our counseling department. And last year, in '21-'22, we had a total of 450 drug kits that were dispensed to campuses for parents. Our Ropes Challenge Course, that is at our STEP Academy, we had 441 students and parents that participated in this Ropes course, eight-hour course as part of the U First program. Our gun-free schools, we did have one incident involving three students that resulted in expulsion last year, and this was an incident that did take place at Kruger Field. Persistently dangerous schools, we had no campuses that were identified as persistently dangerous. And then our last initiative is run through our discipline management department, is our Uniting Families Initiative at STEP Academy. And for last year, we had 442 students and parents who completed the sessions and received a six-day reduction in their placement. At this time, I'm going to pass it on to Ms. Anette Perez.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, School Board of Trustees, Mr. Gonzalez, Mr. Chapman, principals, instructional coordinators, and of course, parents, teachers. My name is Anette Perez. I'm the Director for Discipline Management and Student Relations. Welcome, and once again, congratulations to all the staff that makes United ISD look good. I congratulate all of you. Thank you so much. In our presentation this evening, we must share the number of violent and criminal incidents that took place in our district. And we had one incident which occurred at an extracurricular activity, and that is coded under PIMS Code 32 that was reported to the state, and that falls under the sexual assault category. Other than that, that's the only incident that's reported, and we took disciplinary action on that matter as well. Do you have any questions at this time?
No, no questions.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Section six, student performance in post-secondary institutions. This is a breakdown of United ISD's total graduates, and then we also broke it down by campus. The number of students from the class of 2021, because we are a year behind when it comes to reporting. So we have our four-year public universities, our two-year public universities, and the number of total graduates combined by the district and by campus. But I do want to note that approximately 55% of students attended either a two- or a four-year public college or university right after high school graduation. And if you notice that area of students not found that category, we just want you to note that these students possibly are attending colleges out of state. Yes, that it is not reported. Just so that the public will know, the TAPR does have a glossary where it includes the methodologies, the list of sources, everything is there. You can find it in the glossary.
So we just want you to know that although we continue on the path of recovery from the insurmountable challenges that we have faced due to COVID, we remain committed to our vision of empowering our students to become responsible global leaders. It is evident through our data that we have presented today that United, we provide a robust curriculum, exceptional instruction, collaboration with parents in our community in a supportive learning environment, which is at the heart of everything we do. Before Ms. Sanchez closes, I do want to give a round of applause to our campus. If you are a teacher or a campus administrator, please stand up. You are at the forefront to teach our students. So campus administrators, any teachers, please stand. Our instructional coordinators, our directors, who provide support to our campus administrators and our teachers. I do want to thank our superintendent for always supporting us. And more than anything, I do want to thank the board. You are always supporting curriculum and instruction. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you to CNI as well.
Do we have any questions for any of the presenters? Okay, for the record, it is 5:48. The open public hearing and the DEIC meeting is now adjourned.
Thank you.
She, I think we all know that. So I know that she has a very good insight in the things that I'm seeing myself as a profession that I had before. What I really want to say is I want to commend the counselors in our district. I think the school counselors are helping some of those teachers that have overworked, that have many duties assigned to them other than teaching. But I know that it's part of their job and their love for teaching is there. But I do want to commend our counselors as well, our school counselors. If you are out there, please acknowledge, if you are here tonight, our school counselors. I don't know if Mrs. Flamides are present. They are an integral part of our teaching at our schools and I want to at least acknowledge them. And I know that indirectly we have already, but I do want to point them out and give a shout out, as we say, to them. And I look forward to seeing how we can improve the help the teachers get through our counseling team. And I'll be talking to Mr. Gonzalez to improve some of that and some of the administration because I'm seeing a need to increase our counselors in our schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, we move to public comments. Do we have anybody signed up for public comments?
No, sir.
All right. We'll move on to agenda item two adjournment. We would need a motion. Any discussion, all is in very close public hearing. I also oppose, an opposed motion passes. Public meeting closed at 5:50 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.